Good evening and welcome to tonight's special Valentine's Day meeting of the Planning Commission. Apologies to everyone who would rather be someplace else but is here. But with that in mind, let's dive into it. Hopefully we'll finish before it gets too late. I would like to ask Mr. Turner first to explain how the public can participate remotely in tonight's meeting. Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you Chair Dorn regarding procedures for communicating tonight. The commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we asked that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, if you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. With that, back to you Chair Dorn.
Thank you. So I'd like to do a roll call if anyone could actually audibly reply so we can get it in the transcript. Appreciate it. Commissioner Barnes?
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day here.
Thank you. DeCarty?
Good evening.
Harris?
Hi, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.
Kennedy? You're on mute.
I'm trying. Happy Valentine's Day. I'm here and also with the three week shift, the difference adding the additional week in between the last meeting. I'm back on schedule with my kids. So if I'm interrupted, I deeply apologize, but they are my forever Valentines. And when they need something, I gotta go.
We understand. Commissioner Ricks?
Present.
And Tate?
Present.
Okay, so with me, it looks like we're all present and accounted for. I would like to ask Ms. Sandemeyer if we have any reports and announcements.
Good evening Chair Dorn and Commissioners. I have no announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I am going to move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed on our consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. And therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. So I want to remind everyone, we will have opportunities for public comment on individual agenda items later in tonight's program. This is for comment on items not on the agenda. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised? Anyone that wants to speak now?
I do not see anybody at the moment. As a reminder, if you do have a comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or if you are calling in, press star nine. That will raise your hand.
Okay, let's give them a few seconds for people to raise their hands.
I do have one hand raised. Second. Okay. I will introduce Ryan Lowe. Ryan, you have three minutes to give your public comment. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation. And a Vaughn, it doesn't look like I have the ability to unmute people. There we go. Okay. All right, Ryan, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, so I just, I just had to check in. Our project is for 269 Willow Road. And I believe our team is trying to call in as well. So I believe during our last commissioning hearing, the only thing left over is for the fence. So I would like to know, are we just need to wait for our turn before we raise our hand or?
Yeah, we will have an opportunity for public comment on that application. So this is for items not on the agenda tonight. We will be getting to 269 Willow Road very shortly. It's the first item on our agenda.
Awesome. And another thing, I don't see myself on the screen. This is correct too, right? Right now I do have a mute control button, but I don't have a screen control button. So you guys see me at all or you guys don't see me at all?
We cannot see you.
Okay.
I don't know if you can do anything about that.
No, to me, I'm okay. Just for information, I just don't have the the control of the turn on the video or non-turn on the video, but I'm okay without. Sorry, I have the mute button. I think I'm good enough.
Okay. Mr. Turner, do we have any other hands raised for public comment on items not on the agenda tonight?
We did not.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and move to the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar tonight. First is the approval of minutes from the December 13th to 2021 planning commission meeting. And secondly, we have architectural control. Audrey Bauer at 133 Stone Pine Lane. This is a request for architectural control to make exterior modifications to the front facade of an existing three-story townhouse in the R3 apartment zoning district, including the addition of new gross floor area. We have a staff report, but this is in the consent calendar. So does anyone wish to remove either of these items from the consent calendar so we can discuss them? Not seeing any hands. Can I get a motion to approve the consent count? Commissioner DeCarty has his hand raised. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tate seconded. I'll call the role Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricks? You're on mute. Commissioner Ricks, you're on mute.
I'll vote yes, but I would like to note that I didn't raise my hand soon enough. I apologize. In the minutes, there are two typos on page 13 and page 14. I don't think they affect overall the approval of the minutes. But I will email those if that's appropriate.
I think that's appropriate. So you voted yes. Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, the minutes and the architectural control.
Commissioner, I'm sorry Chair Dorn.
Yep.
I did come in late for this meeting and the last time I came in late for a meeting, I opted to abstain on the minute. So I'm going to choose that path again. So I will abstain for the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, well, since we didn't remove anything from the consent calendar, I guess you're abstaining from both items, but we have six votes. So approval, I'm voting in favor of the consent calendar. So both items are approved, six in favor and one abstention. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I would now like to move to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. The first item up is a use permit by Charlene Chung at 269 Willow Road. It's a request for a use permit to construct a new two-story residence with attached garage on substandard lot with regard to minimum lot depth in the R1U single-family urban residential district. The parcel is a vacant panhandle lot with access being easement over 267 and 275 Willow Road. And 269 Willow Road proposes the new address for the subject parcel. The proposal also includes a request for a use permit to allow a seven-foot tall fence within the front setback. So we do have a staff report on this. We have discussed this previously at our last meeting. And I believe there was a consensus on the commission to approve. The only question was the fence and there were, at the time, the last meeting, there was no use permit request to allow a seven-foot tall fence. So they've resubmitted the application with that use permit request. I don't know that we need to have a lot of discussion on this matter. Because I think everyone was in favor of the last meeting. I would like to see if someone would like to make a motion to approve submitted.
To actually Chair Dorn, I just wanted as a quick update from staff at the beginning of the item.
Okay.
At the original meeting, Commissioner Barnes had noted he intended to recuse. So just before we go any further, wanted to give him an opportunity if he wanted to recuse himself. Other than that, there's no updates from staff at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, thanks for reminding me. I will again, although it's not mandatory, choose to opt out of this. So I will go. I'll turn off my video.
Yeah, I think just drop your video and go unmute yourself and then we should be finished with this pretty quickly. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Commissioner Ricks?
I will so move to approve with the to approve both the fence request and the project.
Thank you. Mr. Paz, did you want to say something? Looks like you're raising your hand.
I was actually just looking to the planning commission liaison to confirm whether or not we need to take public comment on this item specifically before.
Yes, that's correct. It is. It does include a new request for the fence height. So it should be open for public comment. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll pause the motion. Stay what for the moment. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised for public comment?
At this time, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, let's give them just a moment. Still no hands raised?
Correct.
Okay, so Ms. Sandemeyer, Mr. Paz, are we empowered to move to a vote now or is there anything else we need to do? Do we need to hear from the staff report? I think we're familiar with the application.
I think so. I think the only other item would be to, if the applicant wanted to present, but I would leave that up to them to decide in a sense.
Okay. We did have the applicant here by phone. I would just remind them that I think that this, there's no controversy on the application. But they wish to speak, they certainly have the rights to do so. Okay, I'm not seeing them coming in. So do we have a second for the motion?
Okay.
Commissioner Harris?
Second.
Thank you. I'll call the role. Commissioner Barnes is recused. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, and I just want to thank them for having, for your willingness to return to the planning commission on this, on the height of the fence. So thank you very much. Yes.
Yeah, apologies to the applicant, but we do need to follow our procedures. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I'll vote in favor as well. So we have six in favor with one recusal. Thank you very much to the applicant and sorry to make you go through this second time. Okay, I want to move to the next item under public hearing. Oh, that's been continued. My apologies. So we'll close the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting.
Sorry, three of the chair. I apologize. I didn't provide an update on this item. So because it's continued. Chair Dorn, if you could just ask for a vote, the planning commission should vote to continue it.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
I believe, yeah, our city attorney has said it's best to do a motion.
Okay.
Continue.
Anyone like to move to continue this item?
Can I ask if we're going to vote to continue it, why we're voting to continue it?
Yes, there were some items still outstanding that the applicant will be providing. So we didn't have everything ready to take it to planning commission.
All right, so moved. I will table to continue.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Barnes, are you back with us? Do we have Commissioner Barnes?
I am back with you and I'll be curious to see on future items get continued, whether we are taking a vote or not. But for the purposes of this, if that's what's called for, I'm happy to vote yes.
Yeah, I don't recall having votes on continued matters before, but I guess we're getting advice from the city attorney that we should. So let's do it. Commissioner DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rigs?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
And myself. So seven zero, we're voting to continue. Ms. Sandemeyer, are we done?
Yes, this item is complete.
Thank you. So we're closing the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. We'll open the study session. Item G1 on tonight's agenda is a study session for O'Brien Drive Portfolio LLC, 1300 to 1320 Willow Road. 975 to 955 and 1001 to 1015 O'Brien Drive. Study session for requests for a development agreement, architectural control, use permit, lot line adjustment, lot merger, below market rate EMR housing agreement, environmental review to demolish three existing one-story commercial buildings on three parcels and construct one new five-story building for research and development, R and D. One new four-story building for R and D and one new six-story parking structure with an attached two-story meeting space on two parcels located in the life science bonus LSB zoning district. The proposed project would be constructed in two phases with the five-story R and D building, parking structure and meeting space to be developed in the first phase and the four-story R and D building in the second phase. The proposed total gross floor area project would be approximately 228,260 square feet R and D space with a floor area ratio FAR of 1.24 and 9,600 square feet of commercial space. Point zero four FAR. The proposal includes a request for an increase, an increase in height and FAR under the bonus level development allowance in exchange for community amenities. We do have a staff report on this. Is it, sorry? These report, is it, Mr. Paz, do you have anything to add or any corrections, additions to the staff report?
Chair Dorn, it's my project. No worries. I do have one update. The planning commission was sent a letter this afternoon or this morning from the applicant as an update regarding the use of the meeting space, proposed meeting space building at the rear of the parking structure. So it was sent to each commissioner and is also attached to the agenda. And with that, I am available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Turner? Okay, I think we have the applicant here with a presentation. Mr. Talton?
Oh, it looks like I'm able to talk, but I'm not able to turn on my video on, but happy to continue.
We can see the presentation, so.
Perfect. That's, that's much better than seeing me. Chair Dorn and members of the planning commission, thank you for the opportunity to present or study this exciting project. I'm John Tarleton, President and CEO of Tarleton Properties and the leader of the Menlo Park Labs team. As you can see from, let's see, can you see yet? How do we advance? Okay, there we go. Now I'm starting my video. And see if I can. My apologies. Trying to figure out how to advance the slide. Oh, there we go. I'll do it. As you can see from this slide, Menlo Park Labs currently encompasses 23 buildings and approximately 70 different life science companies. The beginning of the journey for many of our tenants is our incubator, which allows entrepreneurs to rent small amounts of space on a month-to-month basis. With this flexibility, many of our tenant entrepreneurs are able to push their science far along the path to positively impacting patients using only seed money. And the Menlo Park Labs is key to our company vision of fostering entrepreneurs who are lowering the cost of healthcare and improving patient outcomes while providing jobs across a broad socioeconomic spectrum and a stable and growing tax revenue base for our host city. The 1005 O'Brien Drive and 1320 Willow Development Project is the latest piece of implementation on our vision for the Life Science District set out approximately six years ago. We hope that you share our excitement as this vision unfolds. As a side note, and as referenced earlier by our staff planner, it appears that we failed to adequately communicate the intent of the community meeting space building on this project. The genesis for this building came from this commission asking us to consider how our developments would connect with the surrounding community. We subsequently met with community members to discuss what they would like to see in the LS district as an addition to R and D space and heard that what the surrounding community needs is well-designed space for community groups to meet within Bell Haven itself. We are hopeful that our letter and the comments from two of the likely nonprofit users of this proposed facility clarifies our intent and allays any concerns. I'm of course available for questions. With that, I will hand the presentation of the project itself over to our lead architect, Alka McGregor of TES.
Alka McGregor with the ES Architects, we've been working with Tarleton Properties and with Menlo Park for over 30 years, building buildings in this location. The slide here is an overview of the existing buildings that Tarleton owns and works within this site. The property we're considering is in the bottom left corner. There are three buildings that are adjacent to the other projects, which are the Mid Peninsula High School, obviously Willow Village and the Eternal Life Church and DM Figley. And the last one is 1035 O'Brien Drive. I think I have access to move the slides, but I'm not quite sure how I can do that on here. Is there a mouse? Okay, got it. And 1035 O'Brien Drive, which was the latest project that we built in this location here is a new concrete tilt-up structure. The current buildings that are on this site are in this video here, in this slide here, we're replacing single-story concrete tilt-up buildings with new steel structure buildings. The proposal is for two new buildings. What we're calling 1005 O'Brien and 1320 Willow as well as a parking garage to support parking for both of those buildings and the community meeting space. The landscaping that you can see around this in green and trees, obviously, has most of the open space concentrated along O'Brien Drive and along the northern portion of the property, which is adjacent to the Hatch Hatchie and the open space that is part of Willow Village and the Mid Peninsula High School. This project will be done in two phases. So this slide shows the first phase of the project where 1320 Willow, the existing single-story building would remain while we completed the first building and the community meeting space. The this is showing some of the open space native and drought-resistant plants that we would incorporate. These cobbled dry creeks are bio-retention spaces and we like the idea of providing bridges to provide access and draw pedestrian traffic to the main entries of the buildings. The first building, 1005, again with our bridge entry here, is a five-story building. It's got a roof deck on top, has a two-story lobby and high-performance bird-friendly glazing. The horizontal and vertical articulation in this building aligns with the stairwells in the front and center in the side of the building and also with the stories. And that would be a request we would pose to the planning commission that currently our life science buildings have 17-foot floors, which accommodate the high requirement for the utilities for all of those spaces. And the life science request for building articulation is at 45 feet. We would like to make our shift in building at 34 feet to align with the floor plate. So hoping to provide a little bit of transparency in the floors and in the building design. I can stop and talk to that right now, or I could just run through the whole presentation and come back to that. Is there a preference?
I think maybe you went through the whole presentation. Come back to that if people have questions. We'll have an opportunity for that.
Great. Thank you. This is another view of the building, showing the roof deck and O'Brien Drive is in our front area with a parking garage at the rear. The back of the building would allow us to have an open space for public meetings. This isn't public, sorry. This is private meeting space between this building and the garage. So this could provide space for seating recreation or simply an open area between the buildings. Part of what we're trying to do here is provide fire department access, but not make this whole site paved so that the fire departments can get around the buildings. So the this is the access to the public meeting space. And this community meeting space would have a pathway that runs adjacent to the parking garage. And part of this pathway is actually fire truck access. So we would make that a grass area that has sufficient stability to provide, to support a fire truck, but also provide a nice access path to this meeting space. This is a two-story building with a roof deck and several meeting rooms per floor with the ability to open some of those meeting rooms out to that open landscaped area in front of it. The pathway from that meeting space to the next building at 1320 Willow is also adjacent to the Mid Penn High School. This is a four-story building with a roof deck, again, two-story lobby and a bridge over to the entrance. The roof deck on this building. And this describes the site in general. So you can see that this is the publicly accessible park on the top there is part of the proposal from Willow Village. The Hatch Hatchie is outlined here that runs between our property and the Mid Peninsula High School, which is where they have their playing fields currently. What we're proposing is all the purple areas would be open space landscaped areas. We're trying to minimize all the white, which is all of your parking or asphalt areas. Some of that is provided for site access. So in between 1320 Willow, the Eternal Life Church and 1005, it's mostly Some of that is provided for site access. So in between 1320 Willow, the Eternal Life Church and 1005, it's mostly service. So service yard for building service as well as one of the accesses to the garage in Phase Two. In Phase One, the access to the garage would be on the right-hand side of the 1035 or 1005 buildings, sorry. And in keeping all these asphalt areas down, we're providing quite a bit of the landscaped areas. The difference between the hatch and the non-hatch is that the hatched area is the publicly open, the public open space. So that's the area that's open to the public. And currently, in this site, we're providing, in the Phase One, we're providing 30% more than the required open space. And in Phase Two, we're providing 40% more open space than the landscape zoning requires. So that's the presentation. I have a few more slides for support documentation in case you have questions that those slides would help to answer.
Did you want to talk more about the floor plates and the ceiling heights?
Yeah, let me go back to that slide. Sorry, I'm just going to flip through here. So the this building has 17-foot floor to floor. And what we're asking for here is that currently the LS zoning ordinance requires that the that the building have articulation from the different levels so that it's set further back or forward from the streets so that we don't just provide big flat facades on our buildings. And so we've done that in this building and aligned it with the floors. So that's a 34-foot height separation. You can see the angled canopy that comes out here is at 34 feet and the building zone or the LS zoning requires 45 feet. And I think the concept of the LS zoning is that we provide articulation, our buildings, that we provide some variety. The 45 feet means that you're trying not to do it at one level. You're trying to do it two or three levels up. So we would request that we could do this shift in plane at 34 feet to align with our floors and provide a little transparency into what's happening in the building and to make it align with the building plates.
Thank you. Do we have clarifying questions from the commission at this time? Commissioner Riggs?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, I had to find my mute button. Having slid the panel screen over a little bit. Yes. Thank you, Ms. McGregor, for presenting this building and the continued improvement of the LS on. Would you clarify for me the how the first two floors have a different setback than the upper floors? Is that simply defined by the canopy or is the curtain wall in fact at a different grid line?
Yeah, the lobby, the two panels, are you seeing a hand when I have a hand on here?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Sorry, I've been waving that hand way too much. The the hand here shows the panels here. So most of this glass is a solar blue. So it has a slight tint. And this area here, like in almost all of the lobbies that we have in the business park, those are clear glass so that that denotes the entry. We will have bird for it everywhere. So the little dots to help the birds realize it's glass. And then the glass adjacent to this will be the solar blue. But this lobby glass, to answer your question, Commissioner Riggs, will also be set back slightly from the face of the building.
So is it set back such that it is actually in line with the glass on the upper floors?
No.
Kind of appears that on the rendering.
Yeah, it is. You can see it in this corner right here. So the oops, zooming doesn't work. Okay, let's try that again. In this corner right here where my hand is, you can see that the the vertical column here that denotes the stairwell is about five or six feet out, whereas on the next two floors up, it's only a foot out.
All right. So in this case, the upper floors actually cantilever beyond the lower floors.
Correct.
But that is true at the lobby or is it also true in, I will call it, the left third of the building? Even though I know it's more than a third.
It's just at the lobby.
All right. So and then the the storefront, or it's actually a curtain wall, is a full four stories at the, is it four or five stories at the left end of the building? Yes, right there.
Correct. That's five stories. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We have any other clarifying questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I would like to open this up to public comment now. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised for public comment?
I do see one, two hands raised. It looks like they're trickling in. So just as a reminder, if you do wish to provide public comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in, click star nine and that does the same thing. So first, let me introduce Karen Eshu. Karen, you will have three minutes to give your public comment. Please state your name, first and last name, political jurisdiction, address, or organizational affiliation. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, I'm Karen Eshu. I'm the head of school at Mid Peninsula High School, which has been referenced during this presentation. Just wanted to make a comment about the project and especially about the community meeting space. I'd met with John back, I believe, in December along with his associate, and I was really excited actually to hear about the entire project. But I think in particular, just the ways that they've worked to partner with us to see, you know, how we might benefit from some of the features there. We're a pretty small school, I think, as you all know, and we're full. So that means our space in our own campus is tight. And the opportunity that I think will be presented to us as well as others in the neighborhood to have some meeting space for, maybe even for some small events, would be really, really helpful for us. And we were making really great use of all the space that we have on our campus. We'd like to have a little bit more at some point in the future. But for now, we were really grateful to John and all of the visitors, associates for thinking of us as a group that would be able to make really great use of community space that would be open to us. And that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So, Mr. Turner, we have others?
We do. Give me a second here. Okay, next we have Josh Arias. Josh, as a reminder, you will have three minutes. Please state your first and last name, political jurisdiction, address, or organizational affiliation. And you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chair, as well. Thank you, everybody, for this opportunity. My name is Josh Arias. I'm the English pastor there at Eternal Life Church located at 965 O'Brien. One of the founding members of our church that was established back in 1988. I'm currently the operations and community service lead. My parents are the senior pastors of this church there in the corner of O'Brien and Willow. And we've been serving our city for 33 years. We've been at our current location since 2005. And just a quick recap, in the beginning of the pandemic, Facebook reached out to us to, they asked for us to be one of their main distribution centers to serve fresh produce and food to our community who was in desperate need of assistance. And we thought this was going to be a two-month food giveaway outreach opportunity. It has now turned into 87 weeks of constant giving back to our city, our community with our dedicated volunteers. We're still serving every Saturday. I'll say it again, every Saturday from 11:00 to 12:30. And we're humbled to lead this effort. With that said, our passion and our heart for our city and our community is growing. And that is why our senior pastors and our leadership team would like to express our support to the Tarleton project, this one that has been mentioned. In particular, the new vision in building a community meeting space or meeting center as a church, this has been part, that has been part of our community for, like I said, over 16 years in this corner. We're excited for what this opportunity brings to our church as well. We believe this opportunity gives us a voice to share similar passions and missions. And we believe that the Tarleton project is only going to take this to the next level, and we're excited to partner with them however we can. We think this is going to be a real positive development for our local church and also for the neighborhood. So thank you for this opportunity. We're in an agreement with what they're presenting. I will also be following up with an email. Thank you once again.
Thank you. So, Mr. Turner, other comments?
Muted. I do not see any other hands at this time. If we give it a second.
Well, I think they've had enough notice since we've had a couple of comments. So I will close public comment now. Bring it back to our virtual dais and see if commissioners have comments or questions for the applicants. Who do you want to lead off? Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I just want to say like I'm continuously impressed by the whole community approach that John and his team take to the Life Sciences District. You know, it's it's meaningful and it's collaborative. And I think as a community partner, they are bringing something really great to Menlo Park. That's it.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Mr. DeCarty?
I have a set of random questions in this mix. First of all, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for continuing to be such an important part of the community. It's terrific to have this project and this opportunity for us. So really appreciate that. In the list of random questions, one of the questions for us is about the hazardous materials and whether we should approve that or if that should wait until there was a tenant. We're being asked that by staff, and so I'd be interested to know your point of view on that and why your preference.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm going to take this one, Elka. We take our stewardship of our little part of Menlo Park quite seriously, and I appreciate that the the question, it is very important to consider how we deal with hazardous materials. I think that in large part, most of our projects are now approved for the hazardous materials by the fire department and Planning Commission staff members, sorry, the planning staff members. It used to be that we would bring all of our conditional use permits for hazardous materials to the Planning Commission. And while I very much enjoy talking with you all, there was a general agreement some years ago that that was not necessary for all conditional use permits. And and some new rules were put in place. For our incubators, and we have a couple of buildings that are incubators, we do have a master conditional use permit that we hold, allowing these small tenants to come into the building without having to take on the burden of an individual application for use and storage of hazardous materials. And so we would continue to see kind of a three-pronged approach. For our incubators, we would come to you for that application, you know, with with our, if we were to build a new incubator, for instance, we would come to you and ask for that conditional use permit as part of the project. For the rest of our buildings, it makes more sense to us that there be an individual application by the tenant for that use and storage of hazardous materials and the smaller applications be handled by the fire department and the planning staff. And only larger applications would come to the Planning Commission as the rules are set out now.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much for the specifics and the clarity. Continuing my random walk through questions. Back on the the comment about the 17 feet and then 34 feet works and 45 feet doesn't. Could you just talk about why not go up to 51 feet, which is kind of six feet closer as opposed to 11 feet closer? What's the what's the thinking on that?
So that is, if we have a a store, a three-story lobby, the scale is just a little bit too large. And so then we'd have a two-story lobby with another, you know, with a canopy that extends a floor above that. So it's, it relates to the scale of the lobby space in sort of bringing it to a human scale. You can stand in the two-story space and feel like that feels appropriately high. And if we jump that whole thing up, I think it just takes the scale of the building off to being inappropriate for walking traffic to it.
So so at this point, it just completely messes with the design that you want for this building. And you'd have to completely rethink what you would do with that entry space almost back to the beginning. Is that I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that kind of what you're saying in that mix?
Yeah, we would have to rethink it because we haven't done any lobbies that are three stories high. It feels too big for what we're trying to build.
Fair enough. Thank you. And then I have a question in, which is, so it's a two-phase project and a development agreement that would approve both. And so the second phase may not come until 10 years from now. If I have that right, I guess I want to understand how important is it that 10 years out is approved right now, given that the whole world is going to change in two years? Versus what's the downside of waiting or just walk, walk that question through from your perspective, if you would?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And I can, I can appreciate that it might seem unusual, the request that we're making. We have an existing tenant at 1320 Willow, a company called Wine Bank. And they have a long-term lease with we would like to work with Wine Bank to to relocate them to enable the second phase of the project to move forward. But without having approval for a new project to go in its place, it's it's not possible for us to provide them with financial assistance to relocate.
So you need to, you need to have this be definitively approved so you actually know what timeframe you're operating under.
Correct.
Make it pencil out to pay them to go somewhere else. Is that the
Correct.
As a trade-off piece?
It's also the fact that this is envisioned as a cohesive two-building, one garage, one community building project. And we, we wanted to present to you a cohesive project. And we think, having, having been in the life science business in this neighborhood for the last 40 years, we think that 10 years is just isn't that long.
Fair enough. It's all depends on your timeframe. So if you got this in your ideal world and you get this approved, I mean, nobody's holding you to anything, but you're trying to move. I mean, nobody's holding you to anything, but you're trying to move as quickly as possible. I mean, ideally, would, would you want to move concurrently? Or even if you could get them to move, you would still phase it?
There will be economies of scale to building the project in one go. But we, we can't guarantee that Wine Bank will be able to find a, another location that quickly. But certainly, I'm sure you can appreciate that building the project at, at one time will be less expensive and more logical from a constructibility standpoint.
That's very helpful. Thank you. I have other questions, but I also know that two fellow commissioners are waiting. So, I'm gonna step back and, and defer to Commissioners Tate and Riggs and then I can come back if they haven't touched on mine. Thank you very much for this.
So, Mr. Tate, if you had your hand raised, I missed it. I do see a mechanical hand raised from Commissioner Riggs. I don't know if you guys can arm wrestle to see who goes next or?
I'm happy to yield to Commissioner Tate.
Okay, Commissioner Tate.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good to see you again, Mr. Thompson. It's been a while. I just have a couple of questions around the meeting space. It sounds great having a space available for community organizations, but I think I need just a little help with understanding who all you spoke with about this recently, because I know that, like you said, there had been a lot of talk previously about there not being a meeting place, you know, any spots in, in the neighborhood to host meetings and for nonprofits and churches to, to use as a space. And especially not at free. And that, and that was going on a lot when Facebook was surveying for Willow Village. Excuse me. And, and you know, during the whole Connect Menlo phase. So, I'm just curious. You mentioned and two folks have spoken, the church and the school. Whom else have you spoken with? Because in your letter, I think you say that you may have identified some other potential nonprofits and what have you. And really, what has been your outreach in Bell Haven to get feedback on this at this point?
Thank you for that, Commissioner Tate. Our outreach to the Bell Haven community on what the community would like to see in the Life Science District goes back almost ten years now. And with apologies, I'm not sure that I would be capable of listing all of the conversations that we've had with various members of the community over the last ten years. Some of the other types of organizations that we envision using the space are other nonprofits. We envision, I happen to come from a scouting background and we anticipate both the scouts and Girl Scouts potentially using the, the space. But as you suggested, there has been a pretty strong and consistent messaging, both in private conversations and public outreach during the Connect Menlo process about the need for public meeting space that is free of charge for the nonprofits. And so, that was the genesis here. Again, we don't envision this being part of our public benefit. We anticipate doing that separate and above from this, but we do, we do like the idea of engaging the community with this space.
Okay. Yeah, because like I said, I do understand that this would have been a conversation and definitely, you know, during the last ten years. But my question was more on recently, have you done any outreach aside from your neighbors?
With apologies, Commissioner Tate, I didn't feel like there was any lack of clarity on the messaging from, from the community on the need for this. So?
But there's several other projects that have already, you know, that are already in the pipeline or that have already come, you know, to fruition. So, that's why I was asking whether or not community felt like that was still a priority. But I do appreciate you saying that the meeting space is in addition to whatever the public benefit, instead of it being, you know, you wrapping that all in just one bundle and that would be are the public benefit for the community.
That's correct. And I do realize that the revised Annetta Harris Center is going to provide community meeting space. And, and that's fantastic. That is in a part of Bell Haven that is, you know, physically distant from this part of Bell Haven. Right? This, this community meeting space would be on the southern end of Bell Haven and that community meeting space is on the northern end of Bell Haven.
Right. Yeah, you're definitely closer to me. And I believe the Facebook's hub is right across the street from where, you know, where you are, although I don't know whether or not that's staying there or, you know, after Willow Village opens or not. But it looks like we'll, we'll definitely be having some space in the neighborhood now. And hopefully, in some of these spaces, it will be available for more than just nonprofit meeting spaces, but for people to use it for other, other uses as well. So, that's pretty much my question is, is really was around, you know, what feedback you've gotten from other folks other than your neighbors in the recent months? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Riggs, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Before I forget, I do want to note that I did meet with Mr. Tarleton for a little bit last week regarding the project. So, I wanted to ask a couple of things of staff through the chair. Of the items that we are asked to comment on, I, I do feel a little bit as they are prompts. And, and this, of course, is influenced by my past experience with major projects where sometimes the staff will have concerns and express them. And lately, I think I've seen less specific concerns expressed by staff. I happen to feel that our trained and degreed staff have valuable reactions to an application. And I, as a commissioner, actually would like to get a sense of them. For example, the second item under Planning Commission considerations, I guess that's pages seven and eight, architectural design and materials. They prompt this, staff prompts this commission to comment if the if it seems appropriate to modify the building modulation requirement. And just in the absence of a specific concern, I wanted to make sure that there wasn't some concern that wasn't being mentioned. So, that would be the first item.
I think as far as the, the design goes in that specific prompt, the Bayfront area, the LS office, our new districts lay out a certain set of design standards and along with the development regulations to you know, try to give some, some visual sort of interest to the area. But as far as that, there is the provision in the code that allows applicants modifications. And this is one of those situations where I think as Elka explained that there are some functionality and, and sort of design implications from for complying with the modulation requirement up to the forty-five foot point on that specific building. And that's, that's really up to the Planning Commission to come and see if that is a you know, a, an acceptable modification for, for the reason that was given. From a professional, I guess, reactionary standpoint, they could go up to three, three stories on, with that modulation and then pretty easily, you know, avoid that use permit request or the need for that use permit request. But again, if it is something that the applicant thinks would benefit the project and the desirability of that particular building, they can't ask for it. Planning Commission can discuss.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any, anything comes to mind regarding the parking structure? Or the public open space?
We've had some discussions with the applicants about the public open space. Again, there are other requirements that they provide the open space and make it publicly accessible. Again, that is something the Planning Commission should discuss. There has been a question of whether or not the location of the of the public open space, sort of the majority of which is along that northern section of the, the property. Whether that, whether or not that's a suitable location for the, the majority of the public open space to be just from like an access standpoint off of Willow Road and from O'Brien Drive, it's a little bit more difficult. To reach that, it's not quite as easily seen from O'Brien, but again, that's up for Planning Commission's discussion.
All right. Thank you. I do appreciate those insights because of course you spend a lot more time with the project than we do. Regarding the site circulation, and I guess that would include connectivity with, say, along O'Brien Drive. Does, does this, is this consistent with our goals for the area? I mean, from my view, it looks quite logical. I just want to see if there's anything that pops out in your review.
Yeah, the Transportation Division also looked at this. But generally, it seems that it could be improving the, the circulation. You're going from basically one entrance on O'Brien Drive to two entrances and then also connecting the, the properties from, from Willow onto O'Brien. So, there's sort of multiple outlets. There would be multiple outlets. And then my L will be some of the, the traffic coming in and out of the property. That makes, that makes sense.
All right. Great. So, I'll just take the opportunity to say when I look at the, at the list, I have no issue with the building height just because of the adjacency of the other uses. The architectural design and materials, including the interpretation of the lower two levels versus the levels above, as one would expect from the ES, make very good design sense. And I think make an overall attractive project, at least as far as I can conceive from the rendering, both from the pedestrian level and from the distance that most of us will see the project, which is the, the very least many hundreds of feet. And, and that is relevant. The parking structure, I think, is is attractive and the coordination with the materials on the community building, I think, is terrific. And I do already feel comfortable with the site access and layout. I have no issue with the outdoor chemical storage after having reviewed many dozens of those applications back in the days when they had to come to the Planning Commission. And then regarding the public open space, I often wrestle with this, but I rather like the fact that it's adjacent, adjacent to the Hetch Hetchy, which thanks to San Francisco Water Department has been available for public use. And it, I think it makes this community space larger in the sense that it abuts other uses. And I know one of those is a parking lot, but it's, that would happen to be very likely access to the public space and is certainly a focal point for Mid Penn. And I can see that the most adjacent property will have the most immediate use of a public open space. I just think that all seems to fall into space, into place. So, add that together, I think the overall aesthetic is appropriate for the LS zone. And I, I find this project quite supportable for what we see at this point. I think there might also have been some question about whether the community space was appropriate, but given that this is not being offered as the community amenity, I think the Tarleton Group's research is exactly what we as the city had asked them to do and what I would have asked them to do. So, I, I just find this project easy to support.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Hi. This is my first time seeing Tarleton Project come in front of me as the newbie on the group. I also have, like to touch on a few areas where I have some questions. I think it is a very attractive building, set of buildings project. So, I definitely appreciate that. I'm fine with the heights. I really appreciate the explanation about why the ten-year, the ten-year phasing. I could see where a Wine Bank is going to be a little bit harder to relocate than some other types of companies. And so, I appreciate the, the clarity on that. So, on the community space, I also appreciate Ms. Eschio and Mr. Arias for calling in and helping us understand how they might use that community space. I, I think it could be really terrific. I think on some things like that, the devil's really in the details. And I just, I guess I'd like to have a sense for how might that work if you're sharing the space? I know you're going to want to use it quite a bit as well. So, I just want a sense of how you would envision that the community using that space, like would it be open on evenings and weekends? If so, will you be having somebody that's going to open the doors? Is there going to be a kitchen? Are they, is the, where is the community going to be on the list of people that can access it? I just think there are a lot of questions that I have and what, and I'm, I'm happy that it isn't the community amenity, but my understanding is that it is in addition to the space that you would otherwise be granted, I think. So, maybe you could just clarify on that. So, those are kind of some of my questions about the community facility.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Harris. So, there were questions embedded in questions.
Sorry.
I'll try and you know, unlayer the onion here. So. I agree that the devil's in the details and there's a fair amount of nuance here. We view our little part of Memo Park as essentially a joint venture between the city and ourselves. And in a, in a joint venture or a partnership, I like to think in terms of, you know, 50/50. You know, and so in our ideal vision, the the use of this facility would be essentially shared between the community and, and our tenants. As to evenings and weekends, absolutely. One of the things that I really like about this idea is that it pains me when we build a beautiful facility and it only gets used part of the time. That's just a waste. And so one of the beauties of, of this idea is that there are many uses. You know, nonprofits, the school, the church, scouts, et cetera, that are evening and weekend uses and therefore can make use of a facility that would otherwise be dormant. As to whether there will be a kitchen, no, there will not be a kitchen. There will be a sink and area for food service, but we a kitchen is a whole thing. When you build a kitchen, you have to, a commercial kitchen, there are multiple agencies involved. The price is spectacular and the the potential for challenges is enormous. We do have a restaurant facility on campus. It's, it's called Eats at 1440 and we would envision users of that space potentially utilizing their services to provide food or they could bring their own.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you for that. And you mentioned nonprofits and scouts. Would, would it also be available just for you know, community meetings that are not for nonprofits?
Actually, absolutely. In full transparency, the group that would want to use the space would need to be able to provide an insurance certificate. Because we can't have a situation where you know, somebody gets hurt and there's no responsible party.
Okay. All right. Um, let me table that for a minute. Um, so then I also wanted to touch on parking. We recently looked at another project in this area. And sorry, oh yeah, CS Bio and they were looking at parking and they found that really they didn't need as much parking as in fact the city was requiring them to have. And part of that was because of this, the nature of the building, of the business of has really kind of changed and there's not as much need for quite as many personnel. And so therefore there wasn't as need for as much parking. And they were on this, the lower end, I think it's 1.5 to 2.5 per thousand. And I noticed that you were on the higher end. I think you're at 2.4. So I would sure feel a little more comfortable if you were on the lower end of that. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to why you feel you need that much.
Sure. Happy to address that. Jason Chang and CS Bio has been a tenant of ours. They are a wonderful member of the life science community. They are a very specific type of life science tenant. They produce the precursors for pharmaceuticals. And their business can be highly automated. We are building life science buildings to embrace a very broad spectrum of prospective life science tenants, everything from medical device manufacturing to medical instrument to you know, some of our tenants are, one of our tenants, Summer Bio is the top COVID-19 tester for the state of California by volume. And so while I understand and appreciate that Jason Chang's specific use case for life science can be very comfortable with a lower parking ratio. We don't want to preclude the possibility that these buildings would be occupied by a medical device manufacturer that on average would have, say, two to two and a quarter employees per thousand square feet. And with our shuttle program and our encouragement of biking, et cetera, might get down to say, on average, two and two parking spaces per thousand square feet. We will have medical device manufacturers who have shifts and they have shift overlap. And during that shift overlap, we have to have the parking spaces for the teams who are coming in and the teams that are coming out. So.
Okay, I, I'm just going to stop you there. I, I get it. There's lots of different bio uses. I, you know, I'm in business too. So I would say, if that's something that you might want to take a look at, if there's something that you could work on and feel a little bit more comfortable at the lower end, I do appreciate all those other transportation options that you're putting in, maybe you can look a little bit more. I, my concern also is that because we're okaying this project, that could be the second phase of it, might not be built for 10 years. The way that we travel could be different. The way certainly that area is going to be with, you know, with Willow Village coming in, I would hope that we're going to actually have more transportation options other than single use cars. So I guess I would say if I'm giving feedback and asking questions, I would, I would request that you take another look at, at those numbers. And that's, I'll, I'll stop there. Let some others talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we've been encouraged by staff from the past to encourage comments from all the commission. So I will run through the considerations that the staff asks us to address. I am broadly in agreement with Commissioner Riggs. I, I think the overall project is imminently supportable. And it's a vast improvement over the tilt ups that are there right now. And I think we need to keep that in mind. I think this is great development. And you know, it's the kind of building I would like to see in Minlo Park, you know, going forward. I think the building height is very acceptable considering what's being built in the neighborhood. I think the architectural design materials are attractive. It's a good looking project in my layman's eye. On this question of the modulation and the height. I think it's easy to support the use permit for the 34 foot height. We have heard in the past from Commissioner Riggs and sometimes others that our development standards that require these building modulations are resulting in cookie cutter buildings where we're getting the same building built all over Minlo Park because basically the rules require that, you know, they specify the modulations. So I think introducing a little bit more variety into it is easy to support from a conceptual standpoint. And I think the applicants articulated good reasons for wanting to put this canopy at 34 feet rather than 45 feet. So I have no problem with that. Parking structure. You know, 10 years is a long time and we don't know how people are going to be in the work in 10 years. But I, I do think that I hope that we won't need as much parking in 10 years as we do now. So I think I agree with Commissioner Harris. If there's any mitigations you can do to pare that down, I think that would be welcome. Side access and layout. I don't have a lot to add to that. I think that I'm sure the applicant wants to ensure easy access to their project. So I don't know that I can second guess that. I think on the outdoor chemical storage, what the applicant articulated with having approvals done now with the incubator where you have small amounts and you have, I would assume you've got a lot of turnover in the tenants in the incubator. I think that makes sense with, you know, major tenants that are going to have major amounts coming back for separate approvals. Makes sense to me. I think the public open space is great. They provide more than is required. And I think the sighting of it is appropriate next to Hatch Hatchi, next to the high school and then a little bit further along Willow Village. All that looks good to me. And I think the overall aesthetic I've already addressed. I think it's a very attractive project overall and a welcome addition to a part of Minlo Park that frankly needs a facelift. So I, I find it easy to support. So do we have other commissioners that would like to talk at this point? Okay, I will ask, oh, Commissioner Cardy.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I do want to come back with a couple of other things. Just defer to Commissioners Barnes and Kennedy to your point, Chair Doran. If they would like to go otherwise, before you close, I did want to ask two more topics.
Well, I'm just part of the commentary, so I feel like I've said everything. We've seen this project before. And so I, I, I don't have anything in addition to add as to what my fellow commissioners have said.
Commissioner Barnes, did you want to speak first?
I do not. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Commissioner Cardy, back to you.
Terrific. Thank you. Yeah, the two areas I, I wanted to build on were focused on by Commissioners Tate and Harris on the public meeting space and the open space and Commissioner Harris on the parking. On the parking, I would just want to echo what Commissioner Harris said and, and Chair Doran said, which can appreciate that you need to build for the upper end use. By definition, that means it's overbuilt and, and that seems like a shame, but understand that it's a bit of a an issue given your business model. But looking at that whole area and looking at what's happening with transportation over time. I think erring on the side of under parking as opposed to over parking. And then really understanding from you, you have more experience than anybody with your existing structures about parking, parking usage and how the shuttles work. And would love to actually understand more about those usage rates, what you've seen over time, so you can help educate us. And so I would love it if the next time we speak on this, you might be able to give us a sense of your recommendations. If you severely underparked that, what would that look like? And how could you make that work, given your deep commitment to alternative transportation shuttles, those sorts of pieces? Like, you know, I, I can't imagine you or anybody else wants to sink a whole bunch of money into a concrete parking structure if you don't have to without risking the business. So just really want to put a, a, a thumbprint on that one and, and, and hope this could actually be a model for, you know, building on what you've done in the past and what we might do in the future and hear more about that. So on the, on the meeting space, I appreciate that, you know, and, and also recognize this isn't the community amenity, but it does allow you to be able to build more space. And I, it's my understanding, I can appreciate that it looks from above really good because it's right there by the high school and then you have the park. But that high school's got to be fenced in for security. The only access to high school is through one point of entry. So I just, I guess I want to understand. Pretty much anybody in the high school is using it and it's coming down Willow Road and around. It's not like they're just zipping across the soccer field. Do I have that right?
We've actually had specific conversation. Thank you for the question, Vice Chair. It turns out that.
Hi, you're on mute.
You just went on mute for some reason.
All right. Our connection to Mid Peninsula High School actually goes back to John Northway, who was the original architect for the high school. He's a friend of mine and we've served, served on commissions together. We've discussed with their architect, providing for direct access from the high school to the, the public meeting space.
In ways that would be able to work for their security needs and for keeping it as a safe campus? Okay, but it would mean that it's not like anybody else can access it from that side, right? I mean, the high school essentially becomes a barrier for anybody coming from Willow Village to come over and use it then as currently structured. Is that correct?
Correct. If, if you were coming from Willow Village, you would need to come down the sidewalk on Willow Road and then through the, the public open space that, that basically is a I don't know, it draws you into that, that area alongside the, the SFPUC right of way.
Okay.
It has the same. Sorry.
It's okay.
Chair DeCarty. Just to build on what John was saying, we have that, this meandering paths and these bio retention areas that carry out through the whole space. And the idea is that those draw you into the property as well. That's the hope along both the sides of the property.
So I appreciate that. Thank you. I think on the, on the meeting space itself, I, I would just echo Commissioner Tate. It would be fabulous to, to sort of get a more kind of an update about other organizations in the community who might actually really be able to use it. I understand the insurance certificate issue, having worked with and for and supported nonprofit organizations my entire career. I both understand it, but it becomes a huge barrier, especially for smaller community groups who organize in different kinds of ways. And so I'd be interested to know how to tackle that one to be able to make that really work for all sorts of community organizations of different sizes and structures as opposed to those who are sort of the most resourced and the most capable because they've got that, that type of capacity on staff. So so as, again, as we move forward, you know, love the idea of it and would just really love, how can we make that open up even more to folks? And then my last question is back on the, on the meeting space one. And, and again, this is, you've been in this area longer than just about anybody. I, and as a planning commission right now, we have just seen Willow Village come to us. We have had this conversation. If you just go down the street on O'Brien, we've had a couple of these discussions. Basically, everything in the built environment is now going to get rebuilt in that whole area. And every time we see one of these, we have a conversation about what's happening with that unit. And then there's sort of lovely meandering kind of Piseos that drift off into nothingness because they're going to magically connect with others in this mix. And then we have some conversation about Hatch Hatchi and how that's such a beautiful potential open space could link us down to the Kelly Park and Annette Harris Center. Who's magically going to make that all come to fruition? And you're deeply invested in this. You've built these things sequentially. Help, help us as a planning commission. So that at the end of the day, 10 years from now, when we look at it, we've actually got a big miss because we didn't get the connections between these done right.
So I'm going to demur on taking on the challenge of the entire district and just focus on the life science district portion of it. If that's all right. That's a portion that we're, we're most familiar with and that we have property in. We are, you may or may not know this, and I apologize if you do, and I'm, I'm wasting your time, but we're in the process of completing a public-private partnership with the city on the installation of new water mains under O'Brien Drive and a continuous sidewalk from O'Brien, no, sorry, from Willow to University along the southern side of O'Brien Drive as well as a chunk of Kavanaugh. This is part of a broader vision that we have for the life science district. And we're doing it even the, we're sort of dragging along some of the other smaller owners that, you know. Yeah, just get on board, guys, because here we go. There is a master vision for this whole life science district and we are implementing it a piece at a time. And I feel confident, Vice Chair DeCarty, that you would 10 years from now be proud of what you had approved on, on an incremental basis because it is part of this broader vision.
So that piece I really.
Welcome the opportunity to, to wander the neighbor, that specific neighborhood with you and talk about the various bits and pieces.
Again, I appreciate that's hugely helpful. What I will say is if we have that life sciences piece. That is a sort of working left to right in the community. There's an up and down in the community, which I appreciate you're not responsible for, but actually we are responsible for. And how our residents who live toward Highway 101.
Yep.
Going to navigate through that. Going to navigate through that so that they can get access to all the amenities in Willow Village, which is on the other side of you.
So we have a, we have a vision for that, too. The, the nexus for the north-south is essentially at the S-bend of O'Brien Drive.
Yep.
Where the main street of the Willow Village will connect to O'Brien Drive. And we so on an east-west access, we are proposing on our eleven twenty-five project that there be a, a connection from the, essentially the end of Kavanaugh to the to the west and then turning north, connecting to the Willow Village, the edge of the Willow Village project. And then I already mentioned the sidewalk that goes east-west along southern edge of O'Brien Drive. That will connect people to that same S-bend. And then we have proposed to staff, it's early days yet, that we make a connection north-south at our eleven forty O'Brien Drive project, which is also on the, it's on the southern edge of the S-bend that would connect Ralmar and the two or maybe three schools that are right there. And the Boys and Girls Club and allow those folks to have access you know, to that nexus.
I appreciate that's really helpful. I, to Chair Doran, I guess this is just a question or a comment back to, to staff and Ms. Sandomeyer. I know that, that staff is, is pressed on all sorts of stuff. But I think it would be really valuable to have a study session that would actually step back and look at this whole area and actually be able to dive into this conversation that we just had here. With actually understanding and seeing the maps about how that all goes together before we, as a planning commission, are looking at final approvals on all of these projects. I just think that would be extraordinarily valuable. And I think we'd have much better insight when we're having conversations about where are the community access places? What about the community amenities? And what about the use of open space? So I would really like to stress that in this mix and, and Ms. Sam Meyer, if you have any reflection, is that something that we could do or would be possible?
Um, yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, Commissioner or Vice Chair. DeCarty, yeah, I think we can definitely look into that, that idea because there are so many projects in the area.
We have to serve the, the youth who are showing up in droves right now as we speak. Thank you for the time and for, for allowing me to ask in-depth questions. I really appreciate that. And I, I see that Commissioner Tate has her hand, so I'll, I'll again defer. But overall, just to you on my comments, everything else works for me. Height, building design materials modulation, I think you're on really great path on all of those. I appreciated your approach on the chemical storage. Going forward, I'd really defer to staff with their recommendation to us in this mix. So thank you. And again, I'm really excited about this project.
So Commissioner DeCarty, thank you for pointing out that Commissioner Tate has her hand raised. The yellow hand fades into the curtain behind it. I can't see it very clearly, but Mr. Tate, you are in the top left, so you are the fastest hand.
Okay, thank you so much. I, initially I just wanted to say that the project is attractive to me and I definitely would walk over to the communities, the outdoor space. I would be excited to have something like that because that is definitely closer to me than hiking over to Willow Village at, you know, at this point, the way that it appears. And also to the new park at Facebook that they just opened up since I live so, so much closer to Willow Road. But I would say that DeCarty, I fully would support and hopefully we will be able to do something with this relatively soon. Ms. Sandomeyer is taking a look at, been doing a study session of the projects that are going on in that area so that we get a better understanding and, and just have to say everything that Vice Chair DeCarty said about that. And hopefully we can do that sometime soon. Also, I was wondering, while you're looking at connections through the life science area, and I did mention this with Willow Village also, if there is something, and I know that this came up before, you know, within the last ten years also, John, that, you know, I've been in the game with you about some sort of a connection between, to get directly to Bayfront. And with all the new development in that particular area, that would be really a tremendous help on relieving some of the traffic. And I just hope that someone tries to study that and see whether or not that is something that's viable to have a connection straight out of, of that whole O'Brien, the life science and Willow Village straight to Bayfront Expressway instead of needing to utilize either Willow Road or University. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I am happy that you are looking at doing something to make a connection from the, the Al Bernie side, meaning Ralmar or even one of the other streets there off of Al Bernie. My family lives on that side of the wall that lives in East Palo Alto and they're, they won't be able to, you know, they have to walk all the way around to be able to. And we're trying to be good neighbors all the way around, right? So I'm excited to hear that you are looking at trying to make a connection through Ralmar. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kennedy did have her hand up, but you've taken it down.
I did have it up. I did have it up just to basically say that, just a couple of things. So I really do appreciate everything that everyone has said. But I really appreciate the transparency with which John and his folks show up every time. And I do wonder, the cynic in me is like, yeah, I do wonder if that level of transparency around a significant amount of urban design investment that has gone into this would, would be met with other, with, you know, with other developers, if they would bring the same type of rigor to this. And so that, but that's all. And I, I would love to see sort of an overlay as well. And I have a lot of noise here.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners that want to speak? Not seeing any hands. Ms. Sandomeyer, did staff get what they need from this? I guess I should ask Mr. Turner. This is his report. Did you guys get what you need from the study session? The input you need?
We, we definitely got a lot of feedback, very helpful and constructive. But again, I'll, I'll leave it up to the commission if there's anything else you want to discuss.
I don't think there is. So I'm going to close the study session and move on. Thank you very much to Mr. Talton and Ms. McGregor. That was very helpful presentation. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I want to move to the informational items. We have the, on the agenda, our next meeting scheduled for February twenty-eighth and March fourteenth. Ms. Sandomeyer, did you have anything to add to, to that?
So at the next meeting, we have, hopefully that Citizen M project will have that ready. And then there's also two smaller projects scheduled. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
You have any questions from the semi or Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, thank you so much. That's really helpful to know ahead of time what is coming towards us. Do, do you have a sense for what's going to be at the March fourteenth, the next meeting? After that, are there any larger projects and study sessions coming up?
Um, yeah, that's a little farther out, so we haven't finalized anything.
Okay.
Okay. There's no other questions. I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Everybody be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Doran.